Resolution 106-16. Resolution advertising for transportation bids for summer rec program, field trips. Whereas the town of Shandaken summer rec program will be taking two field trips during the coming season. Therefore be it resolved that the town of Shandaken Town Board advertise transportation bids for the following field trips. Field trips. Two school buses for round trip to and from the United Nations, New York City, Wednesday, August 3rd, 2016. Two school buses for round trips to and from the Zoom Film Durham, New York. Wednesday, August 17th, 2016. All bids must be received by July 11th, 2016 at 3:00 PM at the Town Clerk's Office, Shandaken Town Hall, 7209 Route 28, Shandaken, New York, to be awarded at the Town Board meeting that night on Sunday afternoon, and I move its adoption.
Board Member Alba?
Yes.
Board Member Disculpi?
Yes.
Board Member Malloy?
Yes.
So let me go on, yes, supervisor down.
Yes. Resolution 107-16. Resolution authorizing contract for use of Beller Beach for Shandaken Summer Rec Daycamp. Whereas the town of Shandaken operates a summer recreation daycamp for the benefit of its residents, and whereas the camp will operate daily from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays from July 12th through August 18th, 2016. And whereas the Beller Day Use Area Beach is a local attraction and we host our camp, and whereas the Olympic Regional Development Authority, ORDER, currently operates the beach. Therefore be it resolved that the town of Shandaken Town Board authorize the town supervisor to enter into an agreement with the order to operate the camp at the beach for the 2016 summer season, and I move its adoption.
I second. Board Member Alba?
Yes.
Board Member Disculpi?
Yes.
Board Member Malloy?
Yes.
Board Member Storm? Yes, supervisor down.
Kaylee, you want to read this one? I'll swap this with the last one.
Great. Resolution 108-16. Resolution authorizing contract with UCAT. Whereas the town of Shandaken Summer Recreation Program runs from Tuesday, July 12th through and Thursday, excuse me, from Tuesday, July 12th and Thursday, August 18th, 2016. Whereas the Ulster County Area Transit, UCAT, system has provided us with the required daily transportation for the camp participants and counselors excluding field trips dates of Wednesday, August 3rd and August 17th, 2016. Therefore be it resolved that the town of Shandaken Town Board authorizes the town supervisor to enter into agreement with UCAT in order to provide said transportation for those dates for program participates and employees, and moves its adoption.
I'll second that.
Board Member Alba?
Yes.
Board Member Disculpi?
Yes.
Board Member Malloy?
Yes.
Board Member Storm?
Yes.
Supervisor down.
Yes.
Resolution 109-16. Award bid Little Tech Hollow Road Bridge Replacement. Whereas pursuant to Resolution 98-16, the town of Shandaken Town Board advertised for and received bids to firms to replace Little Tech Hollow Road Bridge. Whereas on May 23rd, 2016, the Hollowing bids were received and accepted as qualified bidders. Advanced Enterprise, 40 Mullins Lane, Sagerties, New York, 12477, $471,690. Bet and Crin Construction Group, 22 Century Hill Drive, Suite 201, Lathan, New York, Chad Davis Contracting, 521 Watson Hollow Road, West Chalkan, New York, 12494, $459,000. Evergreen Mountain Contracting, 25 Evergreen Mountain Road, West Hill, New York, 12492, Kingston Equipment Rental Incorporated, 78 Stone Road, West Hurley, New York, 12491, $388,600. Tweedy Construction, 90 Crystal Creek Road, Walton, New York, 13856, $448,544. Therefore be it resolved that after a review with the town engineering services, the town of Shandaken Town Board award the Little Tech Hollow Road Bridge Replacement Project 2. Kingston Equipment Rental Incorporated.
Oh, yeah.
78 Stone Road, West Hurley, New York, 12491, $388,600. I move its adoption.
Give me a second. Board Member Alba?
Yes.
Board Member Disculpi?
Yes.
Board Member Malloy?
Yes.
Board Member Storm?
Yes.
Supervisor down.
Resolution 110-16. Resolution to auction obsolete vehicle and purchase backhoe. Whereas the town of Shandaken has identified several pieces of equipment that it has deemed obsolete. Whereas the town would like to offer the vehicle and equipment up for auction through auctionsinternational.com. And whereas the following vehicle and equipment have been identified as obsolete, number 31, a 1993 JCV backhoe, model 215, VIN number 21500CPE406991. Number 37, a 1995 Case Tractor Model 423OXL, VIN number JJE091114. Whereas the Shandaken Highway Department is in need of a backhoe, and that the town of Shandaken Town Board approve the purchase of a used 1999 JCV backhoe, VIN number SLP 214TCXQ0481256 from Westchester Tractor Company for $15,000. Therefore be it resolved that the Town Board hereby authorize to place the above-mentioned items up for bid through auctionsinternational.com and to purchase the used backhoe, and move its adoption.
Board Member Alba?
Yes.
Board Member Disculpi?
Yes.
Board Member Malloy?
Yes.
Board Member Storm?
Yes.
Supervisor down.
Yes.
Folks, with that, I know a couple people here with some topics to discuss. John, I'll give you the floor next. Aneek had contacted us via email. Aneek, if you want to get up.
Aneek?
Aneek, can you step up to the microphone?
The museum that we've always loved is now becoming a threat to the peace and enjoyment of the neighborhood. Over the past three days, the museum has cut down well over a dozen huge trees, and they continue to continue to benefit. I've spoken with a member of the museum board who says they're building a new rail to store trains and work on trains in the barn. They say that railroad plans to also put in a rail and loop in cars, which sounds like an end run around what's been happening with the CBA meetings where they were not going to grant permission for railroad yards. He says they want to be good neighbors, in the past they have been. But these new activities are being done without the permission or notification of the neighbors, and is changing the whole character of the street and what it means to have a museum there. There's a huge barn, there are more and more cars being stored there. There used to be only a few, and now there are rows and rows of them. They're cutting down trees, and now there's a row, there are rows of huge cement burders. The people on the street are concerned. We need to, and many others actually, we need help to deal with the museum. The things they're doing that they never did before are not helpful for the neighbors or the housing. I'm here to share the concerns of the neighbors on the street who've spoken with me and who are very excited about this. We ask that the museum not undermine their own mission and success by turning their site into a construction site, factory, or decaying railroad yard. We thank you for your consideration.
As I spoke to you off, I, as supervisor of the Town Board, really don't have any authority on public use or ongoing activities on personal property, be it municipal, be it owned by a nonprofit, be it the museum or private entity, the Catscape Mountain Railroad, or provinces. Warren is aware of the activity, and Warren did call me today. I called him on Friday after you talked to me. Again, he was in Kingston already, he was going to try to make his way out, he didn't get the opportunity over the weekend, but he did go there today to talk to them to find out. I didn't get any report back, but he is looking at it. And if there was a zoning and planning issue to be dealt with, he is the person, the sole person, that can deal with that and then recommend the ports take action if needed.
Well, what we're concerned about is we spent several, several months and with a lot of research and lawyers, which directed the zoning board that it was not okay to have a railroad yard that was proposed. And now it seems like something like that is happening.
Well, from what I know, from what I've seen, watching the meetings at home and discussions that had, the discussion board was about the structure being placed there, and that was the zoning variance that they went for, was for a structure to be placed on the Catscape Mountain Railroad property. They were going for a use variance on that property to, in order to place that structure there. Empire Railway Museum was not an applicant, as far as I knew. If Empire Railway Museum is doing some kind of activity that involves some kind of development within the floodplain or some structure to be developed, then yes, absolutely, the zoning and planning boards will get involved. And Warren and I even had a small discussion on if they're putting rail lines in to move vehicles around, does that warrant a floodplain development permit, which in our estimation it does, which would require a little bit of work on their part, kind of minimal, but it's really Warren's hands. He is the end all be all, must be said and done on a parcel.
We want it to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. John?
Yes?
Yeah, I have questions about this new flood plan, you know, flood relief plan, whatever, about taking down the Ruth Gale Building and other buildings from the town of Shandaken. Was the engineer here during Irene? Because I don't see how the Ruth Gale Building was a part of the problem. The problem was the bridges were dammed up by all the debris that's in the stream. By taking down a Ruth Gale Building and working below that bridge, you're still going to have the same problem. That bridge is still going to dam up, and the water is going to come through Phoenicia. And why destroy taxpayers and relocalize people? I don't understand. And in Mount Pleasant, why can't you just redo the dike, reinforce it, make it taller, whatever? Why widen the stream and take buildings? I don't understand that. It makes, we're supposed to be protecting the people in this town and their homes. Why destroy them and relocate them? I just don't understand that.
So let me start with the first bit of your question. First off, we had meetings in Phoenicia and Mount Trenton over a period of almost a year between the two communities. Number two, yeah, the engineer was absolutely in Phoenicia during Irene. The engineer was actually the engineering firm that helped us argue with the DEC when Joe Martin, the then commissioner, walked into the Phoenician Firehouse and said, "Give them whatever permit they want to dig out the Stony Cove." So they were the engineers behind showing that reducing that cobble base was there, you know, there was sufficient evidence to say it would reduce flooding, it wouldn't eliminate it, but it would reduce flooding to a degree. And our argument was, well, if we get 25 more minutes of free time on the roads, that's 25 more minutes we can evacuate people out of the area. As far as the Ruth Gale Building, again, I spoke with Alfred on this, we're not moving to jump to tear buildings out and just go full bore with bulldozers. This is going to take some time, and through the studies, again, when they do the modeling with the computers and everything else, I mean, they do things where they can dig out the channel and show that the channel is dug to a four-foot, a five-foot depth, will that have any effect? The problem is that people aren't, people aren't really getting the amount of water that we're talking about. Irene was not the 100-year storm. Irene wasn't by 100 years, even a 75-year storm, or what's considered that on the Stony Cove. The Stony Cove was considered at a 50-year depth, where the Asophus is more at a 75-year depth. So if both those streams hit 100-year depth, that's, it's a tremendous amount of water that will inundate Phoenicia. Previously, the Stony Cove was never mapped, and the Stony Cove was only mapped as a channel. They never actually mapped where the water would go if we had 12 inches of rain up in Chichester. What would occur then? We had no idea. Now with the digital model, we can see these things. We know that the Main Street Bridge in Phoenicia is a pinch point. There's nothing to be done there because of the way the infrastructure is laid out with the intersection of 212 and the Kennedy Road coming in being Main Street Phoenician. How, I'm sorry, 214, thank you. The Ruth Gale Building, again, that was one of the buildings that was spotted, again. Everybody that goes on Main Street Bridge can see that building hanging over the corner of, the corner of buildings hanging over the street.
Yeah, you know how many years that's been hanging over the street?
Agreed. And we have yet to have the 100-year storm. We have never had that, that elevation of storm.
But why can't we dredge out under these bridges annually? That's what used to happen.
So Eric, and I'm sorry Eric's not here, but he's in the Highway Superintendent's Conference, but he'll tell you that when we, duh, moving up towards the Phoenician Firehouse, they hit clay. And if you hit the clay, if you hit that clay barrier on the base of the stream, that's deeper than we've ever been. We have never exposed it. So once you hit that clay, which was according to Eric's estimation, if I remember correctly, about three foot down in front of that Phoenician Firehouse, there's not much more to go. As it is, from the Phoenician Firehouse down to the bridge is basically armored with about a foot of cobble, then it's to clay. And if it goes and it roads down further, it'll just be clay, and it'll be that view of chocolate milk that we don't want to see anywhere in the street.
Well, the city gave us plenty of chocolate milk over the years.
Agreed, agreed. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
I don't understand why.
What we're trying to do is try to keep these buildings, again, one of our big focuses was not losing the buildings. And that's why we're not talking about demolition of the buildings, but is it possible to maybe relocate somewhere within Phoenicia? Is there a way, one, to maintain the tax base, but also maintain the commercial base on the Main Street there? Is there property available that we can maybe put two buildings somewhere else on Main Street, or somewhere in the vicinity of Main Street Phoenician, expand the commercial? Try to find it. We won't know, again, we're going to have to take a look at it. Alfred was okay with it. If, if anything falls apart, if the cost becomes too much, if it's way too much money for anybody to handle, for the town even, nothing's going to move forward at all.
And why can't the piles of debris be removed from the stream across from the shopping plaza, the Phoenician Plaza? You look in the stream, there's a huge pile of downed trees and, and those just become battering rams for the bridges. Why can't they be removed? At the bottom of Baker Road and Woodland Valley, there's another huge pile.
So, so trees can be removed without a permit from the DEC if you are not putting machinery into the stream. We've heard it from Ryan Drum 100 times, you know, if you want to get a come along, if you want to get something to drag out of there, that's fine, you can do that. But the problem is that a lot of these trees and the root balls and the strainers, as we call them, are so massive that the amount, the size of the equipment you need to remove those is extraordinary, and it's just cost prohibitive. And then who's to do it? When it's private property, or if there's no direct immediate threat to infrastructure? Again, specifically across from the plaza, there's no, there's no town road, there's no state road that's being threatened, there's no bridge that is immediately in the vicinity that they would say, okay, you need to remove that.
But there are bridges downstream of that pile.
Right, but we could go right from Winnisup all the way down and look at every tree, and you know what? When we clear those out, the next high-water event, there's going to be more trees. And it's just, you're chasing your tail. So it's trying to find those ones that are real definitive threats. So prior to, I forget the name of the storm that was threatening us last year, where the strainer was removed down here at the cemetery, and there was another one that was removed just upstream from the Bush, uh...
Yeah, it took a fourteen-year-old girl to be killed.
Well, it's back up. Again, it wasn't what that was. That was response from Cuomo stating we need to remove threats to infrastructure and so on, so they highlighted certain woody debris that could be threats to infrastructure, public peril, whatever it may be, and certain things were highlighted. So one, again, at the Beaver Kill just upstream, where the Zen Monastery is, that bridge, there was a large woody debris pile. That was removed just prior to the storm that never came. So in those cases where it's an immediate, obvious immediate threat, those can be removed, and the town, county, and other agencies are working to remove those things, but it doesn't happen overnight. Yes?
Tom, I've experienced many floods in my 67 years of being in the town of Shandaken. And in my experience, in years past, what always happened after a flood was that people who owned a bulldozer would go to the stream and move all of the rocks that the flood shifted, move them back to where they were before the flood. So that then the next time there was a flood, those same rocks would be moved back over, and then people would take their bulldozers and go in the stream and move the rocks back. As a result, in all of the floods that I've experienced up until recent years, the path of the stream never changed because the rocks were always put back. I don't understand why we can't petition to have that kind of activity happen again. Because when I was a child, when I was a teenager, when I was a young adult, when I was a middle-aged adult, the stream was clear, it wasn't muddy, it was in the same place that it always is. You didn't have to every five years map the stream, which to me seems like a ridiculous waste of money, because the way it goes now, the stream course is constantly changing. So the map that was just done, that you talked about at the beginning of this meeting, is going to be useless after the next flood. They're going to have to then spend, who knows how much it costs, to map the stream again. To me, it seems like a waste. The stream is filled with, I can't even imagine how many truckloads of rocks that you're not allowed to use for anything, you can't take them out of the stream, don't ask me why, because they don't do much good. And every time they need rocks to fix something, they have to truck them in, which costs a lot of money, rather than digging them right out of the stream. To me, it seems ridiculous. I just don't understand why some common sense about stream control can't be used. I just, I don't get it.
Well, again, I'll back you up a little bit, because that's, that's basically what we're talking about, is just common sense. I mean, you were saying, first, you started talking about the moving a rock, you know, and the stream moves it, and then you move it back. I mean, it's, it's the tale of Sisyphus, where he was pushing the boulder up the hill, and it rolls back down, and he pushes the boulder back up the hill, and it's just consistent activity, which is not rectifying the situation. Number two...
Well, you're never going to be able to totally rectify the situation.
Correct, we're always going to have floods.
Because there's going to be rain.
The other problem is, we haven't mapped the streams every five years. So the maps that we have in place right now, the rain maps that we have for floodplains, were developed in like 1986 or 1987. So they're near 30 years old, if not older. Knowing the process that we had on this, they were actually ready to do the maps in 2011. They were just about finished with the survey work when Irene came through. Now, again, Irene, again, we've seen floods, I've seen floods myself as a kid. I remember my father and I standing in the corner watching the Spanish Manor House go down in the stream while Creekside Rock. You know, these were thought massive, but it's, did not even compare to the magnitude of Irene, which does not even compare to what a 100-year flood storm would be. So we need to be prepared for that, but we also try to maintain, again, this Johnson, we're trying to maintain the tax base, we're not trying to scare people out of town. We need to do it smartly, and we need to do it in a way that's feasible for us to do. You know, I look at stories from Village of Marterville, Village of Fleischens, and thankfully, we don't have villages, we have whole towns. So if a business or resident stays within our township, at 100, near 120 square miles, we've gained. The villages are having a difficulty because they're so tiny and unique, they are, they're probably going to these tax bases because these flood regulations are going to come in. And the flood regulations aren't being imposed by the Town Board, by the town, or even by the state. I mean, this is federal legislation, this is what you need to do. And people that are going for flood rate, for flood insurance, Eric was telling me his, his insurance rating last week, or last month, went up almost $1,500, and one fell sweet. And that's only the first of the 25%, increase that's coming over the next four to five years, to try to meet actuarial rates on the flood insurance. It's, it's not an easy topic, and again, we can talk about what used to be done, or we can talk about the storms we've never seen. Again, Irene was never, not even close to anything they had on record. The amount of rainfall, I remember Tim Hinckley talking to me after Irene, because they have an handwritten book going all the way back to probably the mid-1800s, showing, you know, weather patterns up on Slideman. He was like, they never had anything close to, nothing, so...
I'm not disputing any of that, I just, there are a lot of things of that that I just don't understand. I don't understand why it is so impossible, according to, if it's the city, or the DEC, or whomever, to actually go in the stream and do something. It's so difficult for anybody. And I mean, in Chichester, you go up the Chichester Stream, as soon as you leave the county of Ulster, they've done a beautiful job of fixing the sides of the stream. They've, they've, you know, fixed a lot of the mudslides and the, and the clay banks, they've put that green, whatever it is that's going to show, have plantings growing and whatnot. I don't understand why in the area that we live, it is so impossible to do the same thing. I have no idea who paid for that.
So, yeah.
I don't know where the money came from, I don't know, I don't understand any of that stuff. I just don't see why in the township of Shandaken, that type of activity can happen.
So actually, we did five times that amount of work. The work you're talking to in Green County was part of an E NFP project, or Emergency Watership Protection Fund project, that was funded through the New York City Water Shed and the Sholto Watership Street Management Program. That was actually one of the last projects on the reach of the Stony Cove. We had five projects that we did in Chichester, from the bridge by Mayor Satoma and Hot Stuff, all the way up and around Silver Hollow, all the way up to Water Creek. I mean, all, if you go over Silver Hollow Bridge, you can see where they did the sodding, they did all the work, and it was quite a stretch.
What about the Asophus? Why doesn't that qualify?
The Asophus, we, again, we're looking at spots as to what we can do and what's to be modified. Now, Phoenicia is unique, again, because we have so many properties and buildings that would be affected by it, so it's going to take time to figure out what's wrong. Now, what's wrong, in our estimation, is it's filled with cobble, and it needs to be moved.
Something that cobble could be moved out, by all means.
Again, what the DEC is buying into is the idea that if you can create natural features within the stream, which is what we did on the Stony Cove going to the Main Street Bridge, if you look, there's, there's structures that are built in. They may not look like structures per se, but there's large rocks that are placed in the stream in a specific pattern to encourage erosion and mobilization of the debris under the bridge, so it doesn't get cobbled up again. So far, with the studies that they've been doing of the maintenance of it and everything else, it has been holding its own. Now, we haven't had a real, what they would call bankful event, or larger than bankful event, that would deposit the media back down in there, but we're going to have to see it, it's really a wait-and-see approach. It was really one of the first of its kind in the Catskills, I don't know about statewide, but in the Catskills, to do this kind of work that we did. And again, that was Malone and McCrue, who is our engineering firm, who helped look at all these things. Going back to John's comment with the levees down in Mount Trenton, the problem with the levees down there is, one, they're not certified by FEMA, so FEMA doesn't recognize them for flood insurance rates, or for elevations, or anything like that, and they have multiple spots where they can blow through. Those, those dikes were built for 50-year flood. Again, knowing that they were built in the 50s, flood maps didn't come out until almost '71 or '72 when they were first originated, and then we rarely get maps, like, maybe we had some early maps in '72 to '75, but then we got more updated maps in '87. What they did is they built those dikes, and we have them up in Shandaken, they built them to the level of storm that we had seen at that point, which they thought was the big storm, and it wasn't. It wasn't the largest storm we would ever see.
Can't they go bigger?
And, well, again, if you build a bigger, now you're just building on the velocity, and now you're going to have this giant wall that's going to, I mean, the amount of water down in Mount Trenton is massive. One of the things we're looking forward to is really that bridge, the Route 28 Bridge is really a pinch point. And I mean, Pete can attest, you know, the debris that got caught on that bridge, the backwater, the backwater there. We know that that bridge, aside from accumulating the debris, it's not big enough to get the We know that that bridge, aside from accumulating the debris, it's not big enough to get the water through there.
Yeah, that's a big one.
What they did is, if you look at where...
And you dig it deeper, so that there's more area.
But if you look at where the...